Wait, wait, land, wait.
Good, see that? Yes, I did, didn't retain.
Here come two more.
And they hook up the door?
Yeah, I'll try to get you a head count.
She said I don't have to take notes.
There's an option which most people intend to be called.
Okay.
But what action was taken?
Okay.
He's supposed to take me. Any time the majority of the members of the press.
Steve, can you close the door, please? Yes, yes. You're gonna make him with his bad back?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Please quiet down.
What'd you get?
I got seventy-seven.
Okay, I presume you're all here for our town hall. So we would like anybody at least thirty or so. Okay? Okay, um, you're a large crowd. I'm gonna make some comments. We have some much people on the board who probably have some things to say. And then, if you have questions or comments, I would like you to line up, and we will answer you one by one that way, rather than trying to figure out who's raising their hand and some people feeling like they're never getting their chance to speak or say anything. We're gonna try to be as fair and equitable to everybody as we possibly can, okay? I would like to take this time to again thank the painting task force. I think they have done an outstanding job. They have taken hours of their time, for obviously an okay, like everybody on the board does, okay, to look and try and come up with things that are adequate and make our community up to date and current, okay? I think they have given us an excellent selection of palettes to choose from. You have multiple different choices going forward.
I know.
Okay? And I think everybody in the community is alarmed and will be very happy.
They're saying no audio?
Okay, wait.
We meant to do it that way.
I put a sign language, but it's very limited.
Was it saying over here?
Okay, I'll start all over again. Okay, no problem. First, I would like to thank the painting task force, okay? I think they've done an outstanding job, okay? They spent hours of their time.
The audio is working for her, she doesn't... She's having the problem, not us.
Okay? So again, I'd like to thank the painting task force. They have done an outstanding job. They have spent hours, okay, of their time going around to communities. They have presented this board and this community with, I think, an excellent selection of colors and choices, okay? You have four different palettes you'll be able to choose from, different trims.
Can we shut this person off?
Okay, different trims, different door colors. Okay? I'll just keep going, all right? And I think most, the vast majority of people will be happy. Everyone will never be happy. No matter what we do or what we say, there are gonna be people who aren't happy. I'm sorry about that. I would like everybody to be happy, but I don't live in utopia, okay? The important thing is that the vast majority of people in this community will be happy. We are trying to update and modernize our community. Through this, I believe sixteen years this community has been in existence, there have been many changes to the homes already. Eighteen, excuse me. If you drive around, as I do, in the C O P car with my husband, I notice numerous different outside lights on houses. People have changed them. I've seen some beautiful new doors. I almost tempted to change mine, which I like, because I've seen some of the new contemporary doors that people have been putting on their homes. People have done shutters. People have done the glass that doesn't... So they don't need shutters. People have changed their lanai. There have been constant changes in this community. Things have not stayed the same, okay? If we wanna stay competitive in this world and competitive in the market that we have above fifty-five homes, we need to be contemporaries. And if you drive around some of the communities that are vastly more expensive than ours, they have contemporary colors, they have dark doors, they have different trims. The houses do not have to all look alike, okay? We have a contract with a painter that I have signed, forms to hopefully terminate the contract. We have had issues with them. We wanna have a painter we know and trust. I'm waiting for the document to come back signed. We have estimates from two other painters, and we are seeking a third estimate. We should have that in the next week. Once we have all the estimates, we will take a look at not just the estimates, but the contracts and the services that they are promising our community. And this board will select what I will feel will be the right painter for our community that will do the right job, so that we have paint that will last, that we'll have a community that will look good and current. We change our landscaping, we keep updating that. It is time to update the color on our homes, okay? I'd like Steve Ballack to talk a little bit further on some of the choices. And by the way, we are creating a form for everyone to be able to use, so it won't be confusing as to the color and the trim and everything. We're in the process of doing a form that we think will make the job easy for you and easy for this community moving forward. Thank you. Steve.
Basically, I'll read the motion that I sent to the board, and it gives you a little oversee of what we were discussing from the beginning. Uh, there were four homeowners selected from the south side of the community. Three homeowners were selected from the north side of the community. All seven members of the task force have agreed on the following suggested terms. All homeowners must select their base color, exterior house color. Up to two trims, option for the same board-approved palette. Trim categories: wood facet and gutters. Garage and front doors must be the same color. Accent borders around the house and garage. Those are three different trims that can be used.
Wait a minute, Steve, just... Mute it.
Okay, I understand that. All right. They don't wanna go up early?
We tried to accommodate.
I'm trying, Steve, let's see how long it goes. I'm sorry, Steve, try.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go back a little bit on...
Go ahead, Steve.
All homeowners must select their base exterior house color and up to two trim options, only from the same board-approved palette. The trim categories are the wood facet and the gutters. The garage and the front door must be the same color. Accent borders around the house and garage could be a different trim color. Note that the base color, or the base colors, can also be used as a trim color in the same palette. I'll explain that as we go further. Houses next to each other can have the same base exterior house color, but cannot have the same color selection from the trim category. Homeowners must select different trim colors from the same palette. Garage and front doors must be the same color. Priority will refer to the date of the closing D. Bloodline transfers refer to the oldest D. All seven members voted to accept all the colors and trims listed. Motions were made and accepted. And as you noted, we did put those four palettes on the walls by the pool. I'm sure all of you had looked at them, and you might have some questions, and we're here to answer them tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have anything to say at this point in time? Okay, then what I would like to do, as I said before, if people are interested in asking questions or making comments, please line up. I think that is the best way to handle it. You'll have three minutes, and then the board will be happy to answer any questions that we can. Is there anybody here that would like to get up, has any questions to ask? Okay? Then, please, I need people at the microphone because we're recording. I'm sorry, but if you don't go up to the mic, then we can't, we cannot hear you, and we can't record you. And if we record, for those people who tried to listen in and couldn't, they could at least listen to the meeting. If you want, I don't... You said you can't walk? Okay, maybe Joan and one, maybe someone, here, um...
I'll, I'll go around.
No, wait, it's okay. Well, she said she has trouble walking, so Len... Okay, wait, this woman, I'm sorry, this lady's gonna go first, and then people lying. Thank you.
How many coats of paint will they... My name is Evelyn, and curious as to what brand paints they'll be using and how many coats.
We are set with U C I's paint colors. And that is the, I guess, the recommendation from many, many vendors to use them. And they've been in business, I think, forty years. And they're outstanding in their customer representative and working with us. In regard to the coats on the coating the house, it's a spray, and it has to be a wet spray of approximately three and a half mil to dry back to two and a half mil.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there a deadline that, uh, when we have to choose the colors by?
Yes, there will, yeah.
We are organizing right now a form that we're working with right now to send out to each one of the homeowners. And we'll give you an idea of circling certain colors that you want on your base, your trim, and your garage and front door.
No, you're talking about a deadline when you'd have to get the forms in by, is that what you're asking?
We haven't sent them out yet.
All right, well, there will be. In other words, we'll take a look at what the forms, and we will come up at that point in time. Once we know we have the painting contractor, which we have to confirm first. So I can't give you a deadline till we know when the painting contractor... But we'll make it very, very clear what the deadline is, because we want you to be able to choose. If there's a conflict between you and your next-door neighbor, we wanna be able to rectify the situation, so that we don't have issues, okay?
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I just had one more question, was, um, do you need to put a first choice and a second choice?
You'll see the form, as I said. Those questions will all be answered once we get the form out to people.
Please, I wanna add something.
What?
Um, Steve, maybe you should have brought up the fact that when the houses are painted, the first application is to seal all the cracks. The second application is a sealer, before they even paint the color. And they're also re-caulking where necessary. They're gonna look for the caulking where the caulking is not adhered properly. They'll use a tool to remove it, and they'll re-caulk that area. They're not gonna re-caulk around the whole window, but they're gonna examine. Then they will paint the colors. So there's a lot of preparation. There's even a power wash before that, with a chemical to prepare the surface for the primer. So it's a multi-step thing, not just painting.
Uh, okay, go ahead.
Take the mic off, take the mic off and hold it. Len, take it off the stand.
Okay, and you have three minutes.
Just take it, take it off the stand. There you go, and hold it, your hand. You want me to help? I'll hold that chart for you or something like that? There, you gotta help him. You gotta help him.
Okay, go ahead.
These are the facts associated with this painting.
Len, hold it like this.
We can't hear a word to say.
Hold it like this, close to your mouth.
These are the facts associated with the painting. All the homeowners are required to select new colors. I personally want to keep the same color as I have. No, you can't. None of the colors are exactly the same, they do not match. Now, number two, there's approximately forty homes, the more and paint colors, there is no color similar to that. So they are going to be told that they can't have their color. Now, can I please talk without interruption? Do these people, do these people get surveyed to find out if that is satisfactory to them? Number three, there are a hundred and twelve possible combinations of two or three colors. Imagine what that's going to look like. Exactly, the homeowners need a hundred or twelve different combinations of colors as you go down that street. The last item is some owners will not be able to get their first or second choice. That would be definitely fine. But there is a solution, which I've offered to the board. And homeowners who wish to keep their color, allow them. Homeowners who wish to change their color, that's fine. Let them choose from the board-approved colors. Isn't that the most fair and equitable way of doing it?
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'd like to respond to that. Can I like to respond? Excuse me, first. Did you have a question for him? Okay, well, I'd like to respond to him first, and then you can certainly get up. Okay, Lois, you'd like to go first, first?
Say it from the most...
Speaker.
You gotta speak.
Microphone.
We've authored Mr. Grove the opportunity to go around and do a survey of the people with the peach-colored houses, and come back to us with the names, and let us know how many people actually want that color, or... We just can't imagine, because most of the people who have that color are not first owners. And the people I surveyed can't wait to get to it. It's something that they were using when, when this was three years ago. They're just not using that color now. And we have so many choices. But we offered him the opportunity to do that, and he has not come up with any.
Okay, now, you have your three minutes. No, I'd like you to please sit down, sir, and I'm gonna respond to you. No. I'm... Let me speak first? Excuse me. Excuse me, you have your three minutes, and I'm now answering to you. She also had a right to answer you. And I'm asking, I basically said the same thing to you, Mr. Grove. You sat in Karen's office when I was in there for a meeting one day, and you told me you have all these people who wanted to keep the peach color. And I asked you for a list of those names, and you couldn't give me a list because you didn't have the names. You also sat in Karen's office and told me that you didn't have a problem with your color. You were there to be, to present for the people who would have a problem with their color, okay? You can represent yourself, you do not present other people in this community. I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead.
Look at us, Steve. You gonna inform the people that were first-time buyers or gonna get those to the form first? Is that how it is, or how does that work?
No, everybody's gonna get a form to fill out. One of the things on the form is they're gonna ask you for your date of purchase. Okay? Or if you inherited it, you know, if you know when you inherited it, and what that might have been. You can also check date of purchase. But it's gonna be one of the questions on the form will be asking when you purchased the home. Now, some people I know, I mean, I know that the people on either side of me have been there longer than me, okay? I said, I know that the people on either side of my house have been there longer than I have. So they clearly will have first option if we decide on the same color. I would say, I would be absolutely shocked if there were gonna be too many conflicts of that. With all the options and the palettes available and the colors that people can have, I think there'll be an extremely limited amount of people who are gonna end up next to each other wanting the exact same base color, trim color, and door color. I really mean that. And if we have that as an issue, I promise that the board will deal with it as fairly as we possibly can.
By the panel, there's bowls on the wall.
Man, we gotta speak into the microphone.
Let me, I, I heard what you said, and the scope...
By the panel, there's bowls on the wall. Are they gonna get rid of the bowls?
All right, here is part of the scope of the work, inclusive of the paint job. Pretreat and sanitize any vildue and algae. Completely pressure-clean all surface to be painted as described within. Seal all direct weather-exposed exterior stucco surface with fungi-dye sealer as described within. Patch all throwing wall extrusions, cracks, or stucco subtracts described within. Pry any bare wood, rust metal, bare metal prior to painting. Okay? So that answers that question?
Yes.
All the houses are going to be painted?
Yes.
Three hundred and sixty-five homes will be painted. It will take over approximately three to three and a half months to be done.
Really?
Yes.
It's something that is part of your HOA fee, that every so many years the houses are painted. So that's why we're doing this now, because it's the time when the house is supposed to be painted. That's part of what you pay for, is part of your HOA fee.
Well, I understand that ours was painted the year we moved in. And so, I mean, we were due to be painted this year, but I can't imagine that three hundred and some houses were doing the same.
Yes, we're painting all of them, yes, yes.
That's amazing. Okay, one other question.
Sure.
When they're all done painting, are they going to scrape the paint off the windows?
They basically will cover your windows before they spray. They don't, I don't think... I, I was through one paint job, and we never had paint on the windows.
I did have somebody come and scrape all my windows to get the...
Well, I'm pretty surprised about that. I, you're probably the only one I ever heard that from. Other residents never had a problem with Elvis spraying or anything like that. You should have directed to the office, and maybe the property, the CD would have probably had the vendor go in and clean it for you.
Yeah. I know. What? We got two ninety-two, we got married. You gotta, you gotta come... I'm sorry, Nancy, you wanted to say something? What? Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Very close to the microphone, please.
Uh, some of us are sober, myself included. And so, um, if this form comes out later, but if it comes out after April, will it be sent to us by email?
Well, clearly you would do that, we would accommodate you. But the form will be out waiting for April. Once we are confirmed with who our painting contractor is, all right? And we know when that's going to happen, then we will be sending out a form. I'm hoping, actually, within the next couple of weeks, get the form out to people. They can take a look at it. You can print it from your computer. There will be some available in the office for those people who don't seem to know how to print from their computer. It'll be online. We will make, accommodate everybody. We want everybody to be able to make the proper choice and go out and see the colors. That's why we're having it tonight, to remind people that the colors are outside. Please go outside and take a look. And you will get a form shortly. Start to think about what color you want, and hopefully it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one second question on here, real quick. I'm a very recent homeowner, so I'm gonna be right down at the bottom of the list, which is okay. I just wanna make sure that I understood what you said. In terms of the color of the house, if both my neighbors select the same color, I'm still okay to have that color?
Yes.
It's the trim that I have to have that's different?
Right, exactly.
Thanks.
And Steve?
What?
Is it the day of closing or the day of purchase? You said...
I'm sorry, it would be the day of closing, with the official, the official documents. I'm sorry about that. Who would the date be? The day of closing, because that's the official date, official documents. Sorry, sorry for making confusion.
Steve?
What?
Real quick, um, if my neighbor and I both pick the same main color, but there's gonna be a different trim, um, they'll get first choice. So, well, how will that work logistically? Will I submit what I want, and you're gonna get back and say, no, you can't have that, because it's the same as your neighbor's?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, do I have to use two different color trims? Suppose I only want one color trim?
You can use one. It's your option. In other words, you can have all the trim the same color, that you don't have to have different colors.
I want the house color at the base, and I want one different color for the trim.
Right, you'll be able to do that. Okay? All right?
Governor, the day of Mr. Garage trying to take the accent.
How many people will be painting on the house the first time? They're gonna win, they're gonna paint all the houses.
Why that?
They're gonna win, guys.
Yeah, well, there'll certainly be more than one person, sorry, professional... Please, but please, let's not be rude to the person, sorry. There'll be certainly more than one person painting the house. Okay? Elvis, honest, I promise. Well, I don't know why you saw, I wasn't here when they painted the last time. I can tell you, there'll be more than one person painting the house. Okay? Thank you.
It does bring up the question.
Besides a paint manufacturer, paint comes, a manufacturer makes grades of paint. Are we getting a warning on what years of paint it comes with? And many of us, including myself, have wall hangings, like in the lanai. Are they gonna paint inside the lanai, or are they gonna take down the wall hangings and paint? Or are they gonna paint around them?
The contract...
Please, okay, tell me your name.
Contract is to paint your house. In your lanai, there's walls, there's trim. That will also be painted. They will also note, if you don't take this stuff off, they're not gonna take it off. They're gonna paint around it. So it's for who's you and all the residents to make sure when they do paint that the surface is clear of all pictures and all ornaments.
And that includes hose reels outside? And includes hose reels outside?
Hose, hose reels.
Hose is mounted on the wall, hose reas...
They will probably mess that out and, and paint around it. Just like you have lanterns in front, they'll probably mess that around and paint around it. These are experts, they do this on a daily basis.
Okay? Okay? Anyone, any other questions? Go ahead, question.
I'm just wondering, who picked the color for the clubhouse and the garage shack? And, and given the palettes, what color do we pick? and, and given the palette, what color did they pick?
Okay, well, we're gonna be working with a clubhouse committee to make that decision. I promise them that they will be actively involved and we will take all their recommendations. They've been looking at the palettes. All the buildings, our buildings will be painted the same color. So whatever color is chosen, it'll be the same, and the same thing with the trims, so they will all match up.
Uh, the task force, when they made that recommendation to the board, they did recommend, recommended Palette A for the clubhouse, the tennis pro shop, the fountains, which is three in the front, and that's including the guardhouse and the wall around the community. Okay, those will be decided by the board and whatever recommendations the task force has given. And I guess maybe the house committee will be...
No, the clubhouse committee will definitely be involved. I've spoken to Debbie about that and I promise her that we will take, actively consider what they recommend. Also, we want everything to match up. I know they've done a great job with redoing the furniture by the pool. We want everything to be well coordinated. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just quick, you have any estimate when it was sold, when it might finish?
Well, we have to sign a contract with a painter. As I said, the original painter we had, we were not happy with. They did our roofs, they did not do a good job, and they've been desperately trying to get out of the contract with us by not returning phone calls, totally non-responsive. So it now looks like we are out of that contract. We have two estimates, we're getting a third estimate, and I hope within the next couple of weeks that we make a final decision on who will be doing it. Once we have that, then we can set a timeframe, we'll get forms out for people to select and we'll have a good timeframe for when the painting will begin and hopefully when it will end, okay? Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, Joe?
The question, just so you understand, I see the questions are being asked. When they paint the house in the front, they're gonna paint over the numbers. Don't be concerned, they'll come back with somebody that gets on the ladder with a black paintbrush and paints over the numbers. So when they paint your house, the numbers are gonna disappear for a short period of time, they'll be painted over. They will be painted black again.
All right, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. Again, we want to have more information as soon as we have it, we'll be kept fully apprised. Thank you so much, stay safe, enjoy yourself, and to a good community. Thank you.
Time is, what's the time? Seven thirty? Time is seven thirty.